Can you say, do you want to pick up?
Yeah, so I'll get started.
And there's one thing I could just put in for a second.
Sure.
Would the Chair allow Raphael from the Center for Work to Justin or Charlie Eastwood to turn on the session?
No, I think so. Partly because of the time I have, so how will we have our discussion? I would like to take back the chair.
I guess I wasn't aware it was going to be a non-discussion.
All right, so I pass up before we get to starting the discussion, I just want to thank a couple of people. Some are with in the audience. Emily Summers is there. She did a lot of the work around the resolution. Natalia Espina also has been tireless advocate in regards to this particular report. And I do not see Professor Barbara Schultz currently, but there's other people in the community that have done a lot of this work. And so I just want to make sure that we thank them and just thank them for their help. I pass this information out to you in regards to something that was sent to me by one of our staff as well, Karine Frank. This just talks about stress related to immigration status in students, a brief guide for students. I just, I mean, I know you're not going to have time to really go through it tonight, and I didn't get it to you ahead of time because it literally just came to me today. But I'm just going to read a quick excerpt. "The stress related to detention and deportation not only affects those who have experienced the detention of a parent or those who are undocumented. For example, research suggests that children who are aware of the threat of deportation or have undocumented parents have high levels of fear and anxiety, as well as disruptive sleeping and eating. Other studies have shown that the threat of deportation negatively affects children's grades and leads to more students missing school and changing schools. Additionally, deportation-related stress may, in fact, spill over to legal residents who experience discrimination and may fear for the future of themselves or their children." So just from this document, there's more research and kind of the bibliography and references in the back, that this is a big issue. And I think that it was discussed at the community comment, but I don't want us to, well, I want us to focus on support of our undocumented immigrant students, that I want to make sure that this is affecting our entire school community and the relevancy because of that. The draft is something I gave to you by email today. No, so I sent you the original draft, yeah, yeah, the original draft that had a lot of things that we want to address, but this one I truncated substantially to focus on, to focus on some of the key pieces, especially around the law.
Quickly, is there some way where you can get this up on the school people or?
Do you have a kid? I'll set it.
I'll take the zip.
Keep going.
Okay. But basically, it really focuses on, it kind of pairs down some of the conversation from, with the other draft resolution. Some of it has some redundancies as far as, you know, making sure that we focus on the safety and climate of our students. And so I focused that into maybe two or three of the points here. The biggest part is it talks about Plier vs. Doe, which was discussed at the community comment as well, and so the federal law that's, you know, governing how we should act in this particular circumstance. It also talks about, in general, ICE activities in and around schools, early education centers would be a severe disruption to the learning environment and educational setting for all students. ICE also has a longstanding policy that states it will not conduct immigration enforcement activity at sensitive locations, which includes schools. It also talks about the fact that, from a district personnel standpoint, we should not inquire, inquire, excuse me, about or record a student or family member's immigration status pursuant to FERPA. It also discusses that no written state law or federal law mandates that local districts assist ICE in the enforcement of immigration laws. And it focuses on any request by immigration agents for information or to access a school site should they initially deny and immediately forward to the superintendent and general counsel for review and decision on whether to reverse denial or allow access to the school and/or make a decision whether the information will ensure district compliance with the law. Basically, what that piece is, is something that, similar to the Des Moines Resolution, where it really streamlines our process. Not saying that we don't trust our teachers and staff at the building level to effectively, you know, deny the particular request, but we want to make sure that it happens in one location. So if any person wants to, you know, especially an ICE individual, wants to access information, that it immediately goes to the superintendent's office and to our attorney to address the situation.
Can I ask you a quick question about that paragraph?
Yeah.
Or if you're just pointing out.
Yeah.
It seems, I don't know if this is a wording issue or whether it's intentional, but it seems to stop short of saying superintendent won't reverse that denial unless, you know, law, the law compels that decision. Read it. It just says, you know, a decision we made about whether it ensures compliance, but it doesn't actually say, this information will be provided only to the extent that it's necessary.
And I can make, I mean, that's why, one of the things I wanted to do was highlight the draft portion. I really spent about five minutes to make sure that was clear, so I can add that language in.
Yeah, just to make it clear, because otherwise the count leaves a little bit alone. Maybe we didn't need to. I guess I'm a little curious too about, I'm not succeeding in getting my email up or somebody's number, but about some of the changes from the one draft we saw to this draft and what is now sort of no longer in there and why?
Yeah, definitely.
Is it just being sort of tabled or?
No, not being tabled. It needs to be addressed. And so I appreciate you asking that question. So I've highlighted here, and I guess I'm not going to be able to pull it up, but a lot of the things, so this was, the initial draft that I was able to give to you was a compilation of what various districts have done. What I had planned on doing in the work session was really walking through, you know, what pieces that we wanted to address in our resolution, but then also what pieces that are still important to address. And I was going to talk to you about the task force piece of that as well. And so that was the reason why I pared this down in the interest of time to give you something that was more, that we can address immediately, and then talk about how we can address some of those issues from a task force standpoint. So if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and answer that questions. And so there's a couple of cases in here where you'll see discussion on increasing, superintendent increasing enhancing partnerships in community-based organizations and legal services organizations, establishing all K-12 schools to be resources, information sites for immigrant students and families, doing, creating in-language know your rights presentations for student and family members, rapid response network, refuse all voluntary information, what the actual procedure would be if an immigration agent was to ask the superintendent and/or a general counsel. Questions as far as within that rapid response network around counseling, questions around the ability to train and implement policy, notification policy in ten languages, also questions around developing a plan to train teachers. All these things are very important. What I would ask the board in this particular case is that we quote-unquote kick that to the task force. It did talk about a 90-day requirement, and frankly, there's an immediate need that I think we need to address as soon as possible. I wouldn't want to put a timeframe on it because frankly, I think we're just going to work on it as soon as you, we actually, many of you have been working on it, and we've already met as a group, not as a task force, but many school staff in the law, the law school, retired professor Barbara Schwartz, and also the equity committee as well, came together to discuss some of these elements of a plan and how to effectively move the conversation forward and implement policy. And so really, the reason why, and the reason, yeah, the reason why I wanted to have this conversation with you is taking those elements and addressing them more of a task force standpoint, and then come back to you with recommendations. Some things can happen somewhat immediately and some things-
So this is what you think we can do quickly, and some of the other parts that maybe didn't make it into this draft is what maybe the task force would be looking for.
Correct. And Des Moines is somewhat similar. They had like a phase, kind of phase approach. And so phase one was this resolution really focusing and clarifying the law on what we are allowed to do and making sure that was known. But then the phase two portion of it is really making sure that, from a staffing standpoint, the training is clear and doing some of the other things. I'll be honest with you, I'm really concerned about the rapid response piece. I've already heard a lot of, I mean, you've heard a lot of the fear that's happening, and I would like to allay some of those fears with some type of plan. I'm not saying it's a plan to end all situations, but especially around support and what we as a district clearly can provide from a legal standpoint, I think is necessary to move the conversation forward.
I mean, every time we've had an opportunity like this, the best way to do it is because we have the committee or task force.
And I'll be honest with you, this is one of those situations where I don't have all the knowledge, and there's a wealth of knowledge at disposal at the university, there are community-based organizations interested, community members that I've been talking to and spending a lot of time, or Natalia's been talking to and relaying to me and spending a lot of time with them. So this is a great opportunity to really engage with these community organizations and get help with this work.
So I assume we'd reapply what we've just done with Time Over and a few of the other committees in terms of how you establish the membership and?
Somewhat. I mean, some of those community org, there's actually a meeting of attorneys, professors, and potential community members that already meet, but there are some community-
So we would reapply, so you can establish a new task force, right?
Right.
We just did this a couple of times.
Correct.
I'm assuming you'd reapply that ability to apply and-
Right, right. And move that conversation, yeah.
And reverse group and people don't impact it, you know.
Right. And we, basically, we already have a meeting with that school-based group and the University of Iowa Law School for March 6th at 9:00 a.m., regardless of this conversation. But I think that the ask is again, is to request for-
If that's a smaller group you're working with now, then you would establish, I get it.
Right.
Those people may be on there, right?
Right, that's my point, yeah.
You're going to follow a process to establish the task force.
Correct.
Just like we just did.
Yes.
Right, okay.
I guess my personal opinion is that I really like the longer version. I hear what you're saying about kicking it to the task force, but I kind of like having it here just because it's then in writing, and then the task force could change it. But I like that it directs, the superintendent is responsible for this, superintendent is responsible for that. I mean, it gives some specifics of, these are expectations, and I like all of the different things that it acknowledges, which is a lot. I mean, this is two-page, one and a half pages, that's five pages. So I do feel like this might be a little bit too brief. Like, if we're not going to go with the five-page, maybe add some more things to this.
Well, I mean, and I did, I did use the Des Moines Resolution pretty explicitly when kind of going back and seeing what they did, because they did make pretty clear, again, kind of the legal ramifications. I would just say, I mean, there's some things on here that we need to vet just from a capacity standpoint. And so that's why I wanted to take a lot of these things back to the task force to talk about how to effectively do those things. Not to say that I don't want to do all those things, but I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver, especially when there's this fear and concern that is ever apparent in this particular situation. And so for me, it's just that I want to ensure that we spend, just had this conversation today. I don't want to, I don't want to rush this. I want to take our time in this, but I also want to get it done in a pretty quick manner because we have a lot of people who are asking the questions, have a lot of concerns. And so I don't disagree with you, Director Rowland. I'm just saying that for me, it was more about, some of these need to be vetted pretty extensively, and I just wanted to make sure that I was able to communicate with those community organizations and discussion with this before we go forward.
The things that are directed to our superintendent, could we include more of those things so that the superintendent knows what the expectations are for his role in this?
Possibly. I mean, during your discussion, you talked about kind of the task force, and so making, maybe having a resolution for the task force. And so I could, I can look at how we can address some of these points within a different resolution and talk about it from that standpoint. And so, you know, saying the task force will look at these areas and try to address them and-
That would be, I would feel better about that because I like them to be spelled out. I want people to be able to look at this and say, okay, I can see what's going to happen now. Because when I look at this, I don't, I don't really see what's going to happen. I see where our values are, but I don't really see what the action steps are.
Well, I mean, just to be clear-
And even if you just said, like, addressing these things, like-
And of course we'll consider-
Is anybody not aligned with that? So we'd add the task force's expectation.
And then list out the things we'd like them to address.
I think the watch out is when you said, let's just say you threw both of them, 90 days. Well, then what's not going to happen? I mean, what on our equity plan's not going to happen, or what on the, you know, what on the educational plan's not going to happen, something's got to give. Personally, I'd, we've always acted faster when we let the committee go to the work, prioritize it, figure it out. It always happens faster than the end versus us wanting a bunch of stuff, a bunch of activities that may or may not be, you know, what's most effective.
Well, it's a volatile situation. We don't know what's being said tonight, right at this minute, that people are changing things that we don't know about. One thing, excuse me, that, that I, very early on, I would like to see us put in something, and I know we have supported inclusive, I would just be simple and say welcoming and value all, every and all students. Something just as, just as basic and common as that very early in this. And the concerns that were brought up about students and social security numbers tonight, I think that has to be immediately addressed to staff and conveyed, because if we have students that are not pursuing educational opportunities for fear of a social security number, which I remember as a, going to a county convention, the very first one when I was 18 years old, an older farmer getting up and just railing on the fact that people are using their social security numbers on licenses, and that the social security number was designed for one thing, and that's for the social security department, it shouldn't be used for anything else. And I think with identity theft and things like that, we should steer clear of it ourselves. But that, I think that's got to, that's got to be done, because I do not want to see students not go to the regional center for the simple fact that they fear the use of their social security number to register for. Now, if it's as simple as, it's an optional thing-
Yeah, can I just, that's the, it's one thing if it says social security number optional. Another thing you say, social security number, you don't have to put it if you don't have one. So you're admitting you don't have one if you're blanked. That's much more-
If we, if it's optional and we don't need it, why do we mess with it?
Yeah, I mean, those are some of the things that maybe weren't necessarily outlined in that original draft that I sent you, that we already kind of talked about, kind of with school staff and the equity committee and the law school, that are things that we want to address. And so I totally, I totally agree from that standpoint.
For example, on that, last year, I got a call, a phone call, asking for my son's social security number for a project review A course. So I was not told, you don't have to get it. They just said, we'd like you to have it so that you can get college credit for this. So that's the kind of thing I think that people just need to be told, like, let's not do that anymore.
Yeah.
Right, and that's what we'll, we'll have to take that, you know, that was learning for me tonight. We'll have to take that feedback to Kirkwood because that's their process, you know, for how they work credit and do that. So we'll share that feedback, that that's creating some apprehension with some of our students, that if it's possible to enroll and get that credit and not have to provide that number, then, you know, how are we being explicit about making sure students are educated about that piece?
I think I agree a hundred percent, Kingsley, with the immediacy of this issue. And for me, a two-page clean commitment to our undocumented immigrant families, a resolution for the board, the second draft, I think is critical with the addition of the task force, because just from a policy standpoint, you know, we tend to, Chris has served on, Director Leewig has served on the committee with me before, and Paul has served on it now, you know, we hash over, we argue over semicolons, whatever, and try and thoroughly vet things. And I think that the pages that are, we'll say suspended from the first draft to the second drafts for consideration of the task force, I think are critical. But at a rapid strike, for us to, for us to do something quickly, I think it's much better form to do something that's clean and short with the addition of the, take it to the task force and look for their recommendations. Because just like we could approve a lot and then take it away, we can approve a little and add to it based on the task force.
I just want to try to basically agree with what you just said. I'm fine with the two-page thing, just to get it done. But I do think it's a good idea to have something we can show people and say, this is what's on the agenda for the task force, you know, not just say we have task force, but have a list of things, you know.
So here's what I-
Yeah, where I was talking about, if there's certain themes you guys want, we can take that to the task force, say, these are the things we want to make sure the task force does.
Yeah, for your consideration.
You've heard the questions, yeah. But here's the deal, the task force is commissioned, right? You're unleashed. Anybody?
Unleashed.
No, I mean, go forth and establish the task force, right? So we'll approve it on the 28th. You'll be on the place by then, right?
Right.
So I mean, we'll approve this resolution on the 28th, which will include the task force, but-
Can I just raise one more thing related to things that are over there?
Yeah.
So I'm still looking at paragraph two, thinking about it. And I just want to make sure there's no unintended consequences to what we do. And so if we say superintendent's not allowed to provide any information except as required by law, are we getting into a situation where we might have a family that for some reason needs the superintendent to provide some things to somebody somewhere? I mean, should we also have a clause like, or either with, either as required by law or with the consent of the student's family or parents regarding, I don't know, just toss it out there for you to think about?
That's within FERPA, and just so you're aware as well, I mean, so there's, there's been a lot of quick turnaround, even the change that I mean, made, was happened kind of late last night. So that's where I'm kind of, you know, I know that there's some wording issues that we need to work through, but I wanted to at least put something in your hands to kind of discuss. But also, our attorney hasn't vetted everything that's here, and I don't see any major issues with it, but, you know, I still want to make sure that he looks through it and makes sure it's in accordance with the FERPA piece and some of the other pieces that I think you're kind of addressing right here now as well. And I think having him part of the conversation throughout is going to be important, so I'll be enlisting his support and work.
Can you guys review this, B and G?
We can.
Yeah, we can. Next week.
Next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, can we take this to policy and governance and see where you're at? At least you've got one more opportunity to-
And mainly the thing I might just put in, there was an incident, there's an incident that was brought to our attention with Raphael's children at a school where they were asked where they were born. I believe they were taken out of the classroom and questioned that way. If this is ongoing practice or policy, why are we doing it? And we need to examine those things that we do that also just can cause undress on students that may have to answer questions that they may feel uncomfortable, and these were elementary-age kids, that that's maybe something that could be handled with a parent if necessary or done with an adult, not with a student in the classroom set.
There's a couple of things I'm looking at.
The other thing for me, Kingsley, is just to reassure our families and our students, to our knowledge, has there ever been any contact with immigration?
No.
The district. So I think we need to communicate that, so I, anybody? I mean, I think we know for the last seven years, we've had no contact with immigration or ICE or any other. Again, I'm not saying that we don't need action, because I agree, it could change tonight, it could change next week, it could change whatever, but I just think our families should know. It's not, we've never had any contact with immigration. We want to keep it that way. If they contact us, we want our employees to know what to do, right?
So, I'm curious, what are we doing about families that just tell us they're going back to their country and they withdraw? Because I've been informed that that has happened already.
Yeah, I mean, there has been, I mean, even, to be honest with you, even discussion tonight, I mean, the time I spoke about, there's, there's a lot of families that wanted to come and maybe express their support, that did not feel comfortable coming to this event and doing that in this kind of climate. So I don't have an answer to your direct question. I can get back to you on that. But I do think there is a healthy fear, and so I'll figure out what we've been doing from kind of administrative standpoint around that with students.
Well, you get, there's a limit to what we can do, other than make the environment safe and secure, and I think make sure people know that we're certainly not going to participate in anything that has to do with immigration unless they're legally required, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's a lot to, you know, if a family informed is leaving, I mean, it seems like the only knowledge I'd have of those situations is that that decision had already been made, you know, for that group. So I think like Chris said, if they came to us and asked questions about communication or anything like that, we'll try to assure some of those fears that, the only circumstances are, is that they pretty much already made that decision, not even sure they learned at school, but they've kind of got back to the school if they're ready to.
Yeah, I'm just throwing stuff out here. I mean, I don't know if that's something the task force could explore as, you know, some sort of mentor or somebody that people can call on if they feel like they're going to need to leave, so that they can discuss it with somebody in their own language that they trust, so maybe not the school personnel if they're feeling like they don't trust us.
That sounds reasonable, I think, as far as maybe resources for support to families that have questions and some of that, and that, that may not even be a school-based resource, right?
Right.
That may be, you know, who do I get in touch with? What's a safe group to talk to? You know about this.
If they're not telling us, it's probably because they don't feel safe. So I'd like there to be some other, I mean, some communities have, some of our community, immigrant communities have, have that kind of built in already, but then there's some people who think they're fairly new that might not even be looking to, maybe don't send it to them.
Maybe also something inviting that you could handle some of the basics of what our support.
If they kind of say they're leaving and, you know, or somebody you can talk to, I don't know. People will make their decisions, but I guess I'd like to make sure that kids aren't just being pulled out of school for fear of, we can put everything that we want in writing, but they may not understand it, they might not believe it.
Well, I mean, there's, there's a couple of barriers that, you know, we've talked about and discussed. And I kind of, when you're, the way I was going with your question was, you know, how our students can sometimes get pulled over schools and go to different states, and how do we get that information to the family when it's abrupt like that? And so, especially because maybe a level of support, the supports that we've provided that really needed to follow the child moving forward, and so we'll look into that and kind of get, come back with some information.
Thank you.
Great.
Just one, on the county ID's that the county provides for immigrants in the community and it's supposed to not instill fear that getting a driver's license that may end up in getting them reported, does the district recognize that, use that as a form of identification or a form should I?
I have to check. It isn't really, this isn't our FAQ, you frequently ask questions back and forth together. And so I'll have to, I'll have to look into what went out when you used that one for, I know, you know, when I said back in the day, a couple of years ago, we were talking about how it can be used for identification when coming into a school, if that was necessary, and that we don't do that anymore. But I can, I can look into that when I answer.
I just have two quick things for Kingsley. When you, if you guys meet in your small group or whatever it is, before the next time we talk, can you just also maybe discuss a little bit, a couple of pieces that some of the speakers brought up, maybe like the know your rights work session that was brought up, and also some of the teacher awareness that was mentioned?
Yeah, I wrote down all the comments from, from the community members that spoke up, because some of them I think we need to address right away.
Yep.
Yeah, they're simple, you know, they're pretty simple.
I just think we can't underestimate the fear that, I mean, our community speakers obviously alluded to that, but the fear that people have, I mean, you know, it's-
It's perfect. And, you know, kind of to Director Herman's comments before, you know, when you're talking about climate and culture, I mean, it's been tough. And I mean, I think that that's been discussed at the board table and some other different circumstances, but I think that, you know, I will give kudos to our support staff, our teachers, our administrators for both they have done around trying to figure out what to do that at times changes on a weekly basis. And it's tough to have that kind of turnaround when you're trying to address, like you said, Director Lynch, trying to address achievement, trying to address other areas of concern. But I do know that there's dedicated people in this audience and throughout the community that are willing to step up and help us with this, and so I'll be asking for their help. And I'm excited about moving forward and really honestly putting together a plan, because I, one of my main concerns, I think I talked to Matt about this not so long ago, is if, you know, if something was to happen tomorrow, I don't necessarily know that we have that rapid response kind of piece built in, that we have that support from our counselors, we have that community connection with community organizations to know who to go to, but I just want to make sure that's, that's really clearly defined moving forward.
All right, and thank you, Kingsley, for quickly bringing this together and allowing us to have a great conversation tonight and take action basically right away. So is there anything else you need from us?
Um, sorry, I have a kind of planned points that I wanted to go through. The other, last piece I'll mention is that the Des Moines, Des Moines did another separate resolution related to protecting DACA recipients. I don't necessarily, I'm not asking for a resolution piece, but they may be interested in writing a letter to the legislature around, you know, supporting DACA recipients. So I'll throw it out there, I don't necessarily know that you need to make a decision on that tonight, but it is something that I think, you know, could be proved pretty powerful, and again, obviously, still within the constraints of law.
Is the fact that there's a task force, is that already up on the website somewhere?
Yeah, the FAQ is on the website, on the equity page. It says support for students from undocumented families, undocumented immigrant families.
And since those families might not be looking into the- And since those families might not be looking at the website, are we handing that out also? Or is there other places that people can get that?
Yeah, we're, that information was sent out to all the school buildings, all the administrators, I believe. Yeah, student, it was a student family advocacy as well. So I sent it out to student family advocacy, I may have forgotten counselors, I think I sent it to counselors as well. There's been a couple of things I've been sending out in relation to some of the climate stuff that's been going on. But we sent out to as many people as possible. It is translatable on our website, so if there's any.
I thought that my daughter's elementary school has a lot of immigrants and I've not received anything from it. Not begrudging the school, I'm just saying. And maybe it's because we're clearly not immigrants that we haven't received it, but I don't know if it's being sent home, if it's being communicated by the teacher at conferences or if there's some other way that this information is being conveyed other than the website.
I'll look into it.
So reasonable, ready to go somewhere?
Any specifics?
I mean, I will say the FAQ was administratively focused. We wanted to, we wanted to make sure that our staff and our administrators were clear aware, if there was to be a situation, how they could address immediately. We did not add kind of the parent family component piece. But I do think it's important to get, you know, this information to the hands of parents in the event that it is asked, I mean, so they know what shouldn't happen to that extent. But I'll have to double check to make sure that that information got out to our families.
And just as they're making their decisions, you know, I want them to have this information that they're going to be safe here, that we're going to do everything in our power anyway to protect them.
All right, thank you very much, Kingsley. Awesome.
I just like to reiterate what you said, is that having the translatable function on the new website, both having a mobile platform, mobile platform and translatable, huge. So I know it's not.
Well, I always want to say a quick kudos to Krista. I mean, she spent a ton of time working on it, I mean, hours. Please don't talk to her about it right now because she's particular about the website. But she did a lot of work in. It's been really helpful for all the information that I've had to get out as well and it's just important. So if you get a chance, please shoot her an email or thank her personally. It's really good work.
All right, if anybody's going to leave, I'd ask you to leave quietly and have your conversations outside. With that, we're going to move to the next topic, which is facility master plan. Get a history lesson?
Okay. Stephen Craig asked me to explain how we get from point A to point B. It took several days. It's quite a, quite a charge, but I'll try and exploit it too. If you want to take the time, I'll explain two examples from A to B. So first of all, I would say to you that we looked, we went back and did it and looked at some history. We actually found some capacities that were done back in 2011. And that predates everybody at the table except Kim Cohen and Chris. Oh, and the sheet you're getting.
Thanks.
Thank you later. The sheet you're getting is page five and we just discovered tonight that the actual attachment in the board item, page five, did not print out correctly. So this is, you're getting a hard copy for page five. Apologize for that, I guess we should have perforated for, as an attachment, it printed out fine back in my office. Anyway, so we went back and looked at the capacities, it was pretty simple back then. Guy named Jim.
Bailey?
Did the capacities back then, they just counted the classrooms and took in types 23, I think it was. And then we, and then they subtracted a couple of specialty use classrooms in each building. Some buildings more than others, for example, at Twain, they had six. At Corville Central, they only had two. But they came up with a number for capacity for the buildings as scientific as it needed to be at the time, I guess. And then they had numbers for the, for the junior highs and high schools as well. In 2013, BLDD did a capacity study of the district. David Duty did his own. And we compared David Duties to BLDDs. They were within 100 or 120 seats of each. David Knight looked at it and said BLDDs was fine. So we went with the BLDD capacity as that number that was put out in 2013, okay? What, and I've since been in correspondence with BLDD since I put this report together and looked at their formulas and it was very, I don't know what the proper word was, liberal in that they kind of allowed for future capacity in terms of how that we might use a classroom with collaborative type furniture, maybe not just rows of students. And so their capacity calculations were a little bit skewed by that. I also don't think they put enough special needs rooms in the capacities. So, we get, we didn't change anything in 2013. But in 2013, we had a list of recommended projects, some additions, a couple of new schools, Alexander, Hoover, you know, and some on even beyond that. But, and then we had additions planned in 20, by the time 2015 rolled around and we looked at what was going on with our school buildings and we did an athletic study, we changed a bunch of the projects in 2015. There were a lot of changes, there were some additions that were dropped off, some additions that were added on. We increased the capacity of a future school in North Liberty from 500 to 600. We did a lot of things like that that affected the plans, there were a lot of changes made. And then 2017 comes around and I took a different approach. And we talked about it a couple of times in boardwork sessions, but schools are managed, they're not just managed by how many kids you can put in a classroom and per square foot. They're actually used by sections. Most schools have two sections or three sections and they have three classes of each grade and they might have an extra in kindergarten. They might have four sections of kindergarten and a three section school, for example. And there are certainly a lot of special needs programs that just keep adding and adding to these buildings. I mean, it's just astounding the changes I've seen since 2000 until now, 16 years, that the way schools are managed. But, so the template that I showed you back in October, November, we talked about, was based on 15 years of revisions that I've worked with architects and engineers over the years and educators particularly, in how we actually use buildings. So there's no perfect, there's no perfect formula, there's no perfect template, there's no perfect capacity. I've studied capacity issues in Wyoming and Indiana and Ohio and I've gotten forms from all over the country and they all have their own little twist, they're all different. There's no real standard capacity out there. But one word stands out, and that's functional capacity. And functional capacity means how do we really use these buildings? And so, I visited with Matt, Amy and Steve and Craig and said, this template might do a little better job of defining how we really use the buildings. So this, this whole thing has changed in terms of capacity projections. It's changed in terms of Deion Richter's projections. The Deion Richter's projections in this report have actually leveled off or decreased by almost 1,000 students. The report they did in 2013 and the report they did in 2016, I tried to reflect that in this. I tried to also reflect in this that actual enrollments of the schools, okay? So if you don't mind, I'd like to take you through two quick ones because I think they might answer some questions. And the first one I'll talk about is Corville Central because it's at the top of the page. Back in 2011. Let's go to page two for the moment, that's the original 2011 study. Corville Central, their projected capacity back then was 460, okay? They had 506, but then they made two deductions, classrooms for special needs, they had 460. If you turn to page three, you'll see that in Corville Central, the actual enrollments in 2012 and 2013 are 429 and 430, but the facility master plan projected only 362. That's kind of that functional thing that they, the formula they used that was a little more liberal in terms of square footage per student, okay? It's a lot lower than the way that building's actually been used for years. So, there was a deficiency in capacity at the time of 68. Deion Richter projected 454 kids in 2013 and that last column on page three shows you the deficit there again of 72 seats or 92 seats at Corville Central based on the projections and the original capacity done in 2013. So now if you go to page five, the handout that we gave you, the corrected page. And you see Corville Central, again, in 14, they had 404 students and 15, they had 422 students, but yet the capacity in 15 was still at 362. There were no additions made to Corville Central, it was just renovated. That's why I picked that as one example, I'll pick a renovated one here, so. So, based on that, it had a deficit capacity of 60 and projected out. And Deion Richter's projections in 2013, yeah, I see, yeah, it didn't change. So now if you go to page eight. Corville Central enrollments in 2016 was 438. I did a template comparison and actually counted the rooms and the resource rooms and used that template that I talked about and came up with a number of 420, which more accurately reflects what's going on in that building. We've had over 400 students in that building for six or seven years. So I think it's a more, more accurate analysis of the building, in my opinion. You may disagree with me, that's fine, if you want to go back, fine, but that's what I think. So, now we have a deficit of 18 students. And Deion Richter's projections for that school actually dropped to 357 from the 450 number. Because the projections have dropped for that school based on the current attendance areas and that were the criteria that they used. I don't, I would tell you that I think they're low. I think they're ultra conservative in their last projections, I think they're going to be higher. I don't, I don't believe this number, but it's the number, okay? So, 63, it shows an excess capacity. That's how Corville Central, no changes. The only thing that's changed is the actual enrollments and the actual projections, okay? So that's how I got that, any questions so far?
Most of the change.
Yeah.
So there's, yeah, I mean, there's multiple developments that are in process that will be in the Corville Central, Temple Lake or Patchman area.
Yeah, for the projected numbers, you mean.
Right, that weren't included by Deion Richter.
But in terms of capacity, I think 420 is an appropriate number based on the students that are there today. It's not overly crowded, it fits pretty well.
So just, I want to make sure on page eight that I understand these columns. The two columns that are, they have dark gray if it's out there. What's the distinction between the two of those?
Yeah.
Oh.
One's current.
One's current and one's with the actual changes.
So the first one represents your, your reassessment of what the current building can hold.
Yes.
And the second one represents.
The paint colors.
What the future capacity will be.
Based on the additions.
If there's addition, that's going to be a higher number.
Right.
But if there's no addition, it should be the same number.
Exactly.
So that's where I get a little thrown with Hoover East. The column in the first one is 500, the column in the last one's 575, it's not like the building addition.
Hoover East is at the bottom.
Yeah.
Right. And 500, I, the reason I did that was because I did a template analysis of the building and came up with 575.
And shouldn't that be reflected in that first green column? Because that's supposed to be our new assessment of what the.
Well, 500 was the design criteria for that building when we, when we awarded the contract. The architects were charged to design a building for 500 students. They basically used the Alexander template.
So I was considering that to be the previous thing that we considered. And this was going to be the updated idea and that there wouldn't be any difference on Hoover East between these two columns.
Okay, so I would, yeah. So if you have a question of why that was there, I'll take you to the last page. If you can find, and it's a little hard to read, but if you go down to Hoover East, which is the second one up in the elementary capacity, and you go all the way over to where it goes from 500 to 575, you'll see a footnote, number 41. Can you read it?
No.
All right, well, I'll read it to you. Yeah, footnote 41 says, is it 41?
Footnote for elementary.
Yeah, 41, 575, in pink, to the right it says 41. And if you go down and read 41, it says, what elementary, oh, that's wood. I did pick the wrong one.
You can hit the right button and right click your thing and you can make it rotate, Phil and Chris, if you're having trouble saying that. Just FYI.
Is that a mistake? 41 is for wood, oh, it's.
Hoover East.
Yeah, I picked the right one, didn't I? I thought it was correct, I thought I made that.
Hoover East is lucky 13.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it should say, Chris, is right size based on the template analysis. And that's the only reason for changing Hoover East was because I looked at it and said, you can actually put 575 kids in this building.
Well, going up that page, was it again, the third one? Also in that first green column, old Hoover is still at 304, although I thought your reassessment of that was more like around 330. So I just want to make sure I'm not misreading that first column. I thought that was going to be reassess the numbers.
The first column was bringing that forward. It should, and it goes.
The first one, the first green one.
Yeah, it goes from 30, on page eight, it goes from 304 to zero.
Right. But I, if the green column, the first green column represents your new assessments of what the building is going to hold, I would think that number would have been.
There is not, I didn't do an assessment of Hoover because it's going to be closed.
Well, I always have one though, it was not pre-30, so. I just.
Well, let's look at the last page.
So anyway, it doesn't really matter that particular square, I just want to make sure.
I'll double check.
Those numbers in that column are supposed to be your new assessment.
I will double check that.
Of what that building's going to hold. And so, we could tell then by comparing those two columns, how much capacity we are adding by building stuff compared to how much new capacity we have because of reassess, that's what I'm trying to say.
Okay. And I think you can in a roundabout way, you have to, you look at it, the new capacity in the end, if you go to the very bottom, you'll see the summary line is, with all the changes, the new capacity district should be 16,900. Whereas the capacity back in 2013 was listed at 11,7, the changes that were made in, in 2015 went to 16,327.
So the change from 15, 699 to 60, 943 represents stuff we are building.
Yes. The last number is what we're actually in, what's in the plan right now that you guys looked at last month.
Except that's a little bit, except on Hoover East at least, for the nice new building, 75 seat addition.
There were, if you look through here, there are several footnotes and it isn't just Hoover East. There were made, they were right sized based on the template. Corville Central is one, okay? So if you look at Corville Central and you go up here to the top and you get to footnote 24, maybe that's what it says. And it says, Corville Central template, right size to 420, history of plus 400 student enrollment.
Yeah, so that makes sense though, at this chart, it says 420 in the first column.
Yes, I'll look at the entries for you.
So I just want to be able to tell how much capacity we're adding by what we're building versus how much we've changed because we've just reassessed the nature of the building.
Okay.
So how about when we're adding rooms, but our capacity is decreasing?
Yeah, and that was the right sizing that we made with the template. We looked at some, like Alexander, for example. We're adding four, four classrooms and you would think that would add 100 students, but we only upped it by 75. And the reason is because at Alexander, there's a lot of special programs out there right now and there are some rooms out there with maybe 15 kids or less or 30.
Okay, I think maybe my question wasn't clear. So in the case of four log, we're adding two classrooms. Your template has it at 500, 500. Okay, and then after the two classroom addition, the capacity now is 468.
Right.
Yes, I'm confused by that.
How can we add 200 more kids?
I almost have to do a narrative, school by school, but the only thing, the only thing I can tell you right now is if I look at, if I look at footnote 20, 20, is it 28 or 20, what is that number? 23?
23.
I don't have all memorized, I'm sorry.
We all need regular time classes.
Right size, remove four classroom addition, add music and our capacity reduced to 460.
Well, I guess all I'm saying is it'd be nice to get it, this one has different footnotes, et cetera, but it'd be nice to get a sense of just two columns next to each other. This is what it would be if we didn't build this thing, this is what it would be when we do build this thing.
It's just one more, it's just one more column, I'll add one column to it. That's all it is, that's what you're asking for, that's not impossible. There's, you know, I don't know how many hours I've gotten this already and a few more won't hurt because I'd love to have the answer myself. The other example, if you've got time for one more.
Let's not, do we understand it?
It's, there's a lot of information there. It's easier to follow it through on the big pages, you can, these are just pulled out of the big truck.
My biggest takeaway is capacity is not static, it depends on the building.
Yep.
Depends on your program, it depends on policy. So we change policy and you change classroom, you change your capacity, you change program and you change capacities.
Well, so that raises another question then, a building like Southeast where, you know, the district, the boundary is changing and the new boundary could have an effect on how rooms are used. So is that somehow reflected in this chart? So is that somehow reflected in this chart?
The only
The home has high, uh, FRL schools, for example, and maybe then that's, rooms that have to be for special programs, I just don't know. But you can imagine that having some effect on your capacity number, because you're serving a different population.
That's why you'll need to update capacity every year, year or two.
You do.
So these numbers reflect
How they're being used today. Yeah, I actually took the teacher assignments for every classroom in every building and looked at what the subject matter was. And at Southeast, I can tell you there's a high number of special needs programs and resource programs. And so I actually looked at, I had, I had the school principals all send me their teacher assignments so I could tag them to the rooms when I went through them. I ran the floor appliance for every building, I had the square footages for every room. So I actually looked at how it's being used today and used some judgment in the template when I re, right-sized it, because some of these rooms just aren't being utilized.
But then, I can understand that the first green column represents how it's being used today. The second green column, though, which is often a future, does that represent, does that take into account the fact that we'll be serving a different population?
Well, it's difficult to project. The only number I could use is the Deion Richter number, you know? So I did, I did, I compared the capacity in one of the columns to the projections that Deion Richter did, okay? That's the only thing, I, you know, I don't, I can't foretell the future any more than you. I just, I just told you that, I don't think they're, I think they're low.
Well, it's just good to know for me, whether that was something you tried taking into account.
No, there's no way, either, be no way for me to do that objectively. So I just used how the buildings are being used today, the additions that we're planning on building, and the projections that were done by Deion Richter. So those are three factual things in my mind that I could do.
Yeah, it's the non-static nature, right? I mean, that's why, you know, as population changes, program changes, and why you devalue the review, and make sure that those things are reflected in the current student population.
Be good if there was a footnote stating assumptions along those lines, you know, for the
I may have written it, but I'll go back and do it. Yeah, maybe, and there's been two weeks since I wrote it.
So I apologize, I asked this before, and I just kind of need you to explain it to me again. So today at Alexander, they have five temporary classrooms, right? Two temporaries, three common space. Their capacity is clearly not five hundred.
No, it's less.
Exactly.
Yeah. And that's because of the right of resource model, they're not using as many students out there.
So can we change this according to the resource, the resource model?
Well, it could be used differently. They could be full. There could be not as many special needs programs out there, so it's a
But that column's supposed to reflect the current, you know?
It's a juggling act. You have to look and just use your brain, I guess, and say, well, I had to use my brain and say, how's it really being used? In the future capacity, I took the library out of it. That's a library, it's not supposed to be a classroom, that computer classroom that they're using. And those common areas are not supposed to be used as classrooms.
Well, but you're not counting temporary buildings in this column, are you?
No, I'm not. But there are kids in temporaries, which means that the capacity of the building is lower than what it's supposed to be.
Right.
Right.
So I just feel like we should have columns that get a signal of what we really think the current capacity is doing, the current use of the building. It wouldn't be five hundred.
With or without modulators.
Without, without.
All this is without modulators, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, without using libraries.
Yeah, without using libraries. So what I did was I went back and deleted those rooms and the count, added the four new ones, and looked at the capacity, what it should be or could be used. Capacity is different than class size. Class sizes are a lot less sometimes than the capacity of a building. It's like fire code. Fire code is a lot higher than, than what a classroom should hold. You ask a fireman, you know, how many people can you put in this room? They're going to say, oh, a hundred, but in fact, we know we couldn't get twenty-five students in it. So there's differences. Capacity is different than classroom size.
Could you do a column that reflects how it's being used today?
I would more like it. If that's, if that column says five hundred for Alexander, then that column is not telling me, I'm interested in
If you have specific schools, I'd be glad to spend the time.
Any of the weighted resource.
Yeah.
I think that's
For all the schools, I'd just like to get a sense of, given the current
It's a good project. It will take me some time. I'll have to sit down with Amy and Matt, make sure that we, that I understand those rooms to be the same use, the same way that they're being used, that they understand it, so it's not going to be overnight.
And likewise, the flip of it is the rooms that have, the schools that have bigger class sizes.
Right.
They can hold more students. So the low FRL schools.
I'll look at it.
Which I think you might have already reflected, because like, for example, Woodham, you increased, like, big time.
I did.
Kids that that holds, so I assume that that's a reflection of
Yes.
the weighted resource. So I guess I'd just like to see it reflected as well in the small class size schools.
All right. I'll, I'll see what I can do, but it'll take some time, okay? And the other one I want to point out to you is that there were a couple mistakes made in the earlier calculations, and the one that's glaring is North Central. If you look at North Central, you'll see that in two, twenty fifteen, that I, there's a big yellow block there. And the reason it's there is because their original calculations had, one of them had, there, let me just go back. At North Central, uh, which is in the bottom section, I got it after the high schools, but they started out with a capacity of, VLDD had six thirty-six, David Duty had five twenty-six, they settled on six thirty-six, but in fact, it's only five hundred and five. There's no way in God's green earth you're going to put six hundred and thirty kids in that building the way it sits today. I don't care what you do. There was a mistake made, okay? I mean, it is what it is. So I lowered it, and then I went back and put the new ten classroom addition on top of it.
But how they were computing at that time, Dwayne, was purely square footage. So they would take a classroom that was the family consumer science classroom, which was an extended classroom, the industrial tech classroom, which was an extended, so the, the numbers they were coming up with was sixty-five for that space, where you wouldn't have
And you, and that assumes that you put kids in every classroom, but that doesn't happen either. They rotate through, so.
That's the
So that's, that's where, that's where the template comes in, not so much at junior high, but more so at elementary schools, but at the junior high, you have to, you have to look at the program, which program, which classrooms are used all day long. You have to discount family consumer science, shop, music, art. Those are kids that move through in and out. So anyway, that's why, that's why I came to the conclusion that the template might be a smarter way to look at these buildings than just square footage.
All right, next slide.
I do have one more question. So looking at the elementary capacities and, you know, both the current and the future ones, if you add up the city high elementary theaters, you get a capacity ultimately of thirty-five ten. And if you add up the projections for those theaters, you get twenty-six ninety-four. So, you know, people are saying to me, why are we, do we overbuild on the east side? We got eight hundred and sixteen more seats than the projections would lead you to think we would need. And I guess I'm just curious, like, what's your take on it, you know? Is it that we're assuming that the growth will actually be more than the projections are claiming, or is it that we're taking, well, preschool rooms and things like that, or?
Well, back in fifteen, when they, and if you looked at the capacity, the projected capacity, uh, with all the changes, it went from seventy-three to eighty-nine fifty-six, and that was, that still was a deficit of two hundred and sixty-seven seats back in fifteen at the elementary school. It's almost a whole school. It's spread out over twenty schools, but it's a whole school. And then in twenty seventeen, when we updated it, we ended up with a capacity, excess capacity of fifteen hundred and eight based on the templates and the, the new, the new projects. But I just kind of telling you, I think we're going to need all those. So it's somewhere
Well, I guess my question is, I mean, we've always sort of thought about these things as trying to make those lines meet, right? Capacity and projections. And if, if we're kind of operating the assumption that our projections aren't fully capturing everything, we're not using that number as what we expect to come along, what number are we using, how are we coming up with that?
They, the reason they generated the capacities in the first place, Chris, was so they could project, how many classrooms do we need to add to the district or schools to ensure that we get students out of modulators, okay? Another report that I've started and I haven't finished, but Craig wants me to, is, is the changes in modulators over the last ten years, okay? So I'm working on that. And back, you know, there was a chart on this wall one time that showed the enrollment and the capacity, and it took quite a bit for that, for the two to meet. My, my sense of what I've been through is that I would say to you, you'll never hit the bullseye, but you're better off having a few extra classrooms or a few extra seats when you get to the end of the, of the building program, because you want, you don't want to be criticized when you get to the end and say, all right, this predicts fifteen hundred seats, but I think the enrollments are low. You probably fill at least half of those or more, but you don't want to end up with sixty-five modulators at the end of your ten-year plan.
Sure. I guess I'm just curious about, I mean, is that, is that kind of what we're saying, like, well, we just want to have a margin of safety, margin of error, but you know, that margin of error could be three hundred seats, it could be eight hundred seats, it could be twelve hundred seats, and at what point are we trying to figure out what that margin should be?
Well, I would also say to you, the template assumes plus or minus ten percent. So if it says five hundred, the student, the school could handle five fifty or forfeit.
I don't so much mean capacity part, I mean, the projections part.
Best utilization.
It's, it's just, it's just your best educated guess as to what the future's going to bring, and you got to be prepared for it.
But you probably
But it's not based on the projections we have, what's it based on?
Well, it's based on the, it's ba, I think the only projection we have really is from Deion Richter, where I know what's going to be.
But that's not what it's based on.
Well, this, this
There's a lot more than what they're telling us we need.
I don't know what you're driving at, I guess.
Well, again, we're building like eight hundred and sixteen more seats than they're claiming we're going to have students even ten years from now on the east side. And so I assume, and we're thinking, we're not taking their number particularly literally, but then where are we getting their number?
Their number?
If we're not using their projection, we think, oh, there might be more.
Well, their, their number this time didn't include some of the development, the future developments, as I recall, it didn't include
Yeah, but the numbers is, it's good, yeah, so.
They use live births, they use registrations.
No, I understand what they get their numbers. I'm just saying if we're going to disregard their numbers.
I'm not disregarding.
What are we basing, I mean, you get the number.
Yeah. I, I guess, I guess the conservative nature of me is that you're better off having a few extra seats when you get done than try and hit the bullseye, because you'll never hit the bullseye. You'll never get there. And you're better off if you shoot just a little high and have that room for your district to grow, because I don't see Iowa City declining.
We've had this discussion pretty much, so.
Not. Just trying to make it, if you, pick any school, you can follow it through.
Why don't you have glasses?
Yeah. Well, you can print this out.
I can print it out. All right, anything else to capacity? Thanks, Dwayne. All right, next topic, very excited, oh, jeez. Tenet zones. So the next conversation was, obviously, we made a change to which elementary goes first in North Liberty, the very north area, and the question is, do we want to get into a tenet zones this year? Do we want to get into a tenet zones next year?
I, my personal preference would be that I would wait until after the bond vote in September. Because I would hate for now, between now and then, to set an attendant zone for something that may not happen, and then have to change it again. So if someone thinks they're going somewhere, then have to change it to something else, change it to something else. I mean, if we, if we have to do it now, I would listen to why we would have to do it now, but if we can wait until after September twelve.
I agree with Paul, I mean, simply because it's both Grant and Cathy Bridge site are bond-dependent. We already have the feeder pattern for what's, what neighborhood's feeded to North Central Junior High and Liberty. I would, you know, we kind of, we kind of left, we said, okay, let's, let's figure that out. Let's figure the elementary part out as we get closer to those dates that the, you know, I, I don't, I don't see it as being a worth, I don't see it as being a good use of time and effort. To answer those questions, if
I would sign on that. And I said at the time, good, I thought we should be doing that. I still feel kind of bad, you know? Told everybody, you know, Lincoln Avenue, certain school, when you kind of knew that that, that change. I don't see it being rushed into it. And, you know, a lot of the past, that's going to affect the whole thing, so I'll pull off this too.
All right, anybody want to do it now?
I'd also like to say that, that anytime you touch boundaries or tenet zones, whatever you want to phrase it, it becomes an emotional topic.
It's time to be easy.
Well, that's true. We've already got, we've already, and this time it's going to be easy. Uh, yeah.
Well, it's true, it did have to be processed, though. I mean, that's probably good, it takes some time.
Yeah, I mean, the good news is
I don't see it getting done before May.
It's very localized.
And I certainly don't see it happening over the summer, but I do see I do see it as being something to, to start day one after bond passes.
Well, I think we're finally allowing it next year.
Well, you have, you could wait much longer than next year.
Yeah, we've always said you want to, we want to tell people the, the school year before, so you're trying to give fifteen to eighteen months' notice.
But I think when you get those projects in writing and they happen, they, they are going to happen when the bond passes, then you answer the question of who's going to those schools.
Start right away.
Absolutely.
All right, I think we decided then. All right. Deal with Greg.
Okay. Yeah, we'll try to bring as much clarity to this as we did the certified budget earlier today.
We got high hopes, we got high hopes.
You can almost read this. I know.
Okay, my business is awesome.
A little big number three says
So
Oh, my God.
Even though this says two twenty-three, I got it at three o'clock today, this is, these are preliminary numbers, and I just want to run through with you some of the things that we're thinking about in the bond. First of all, you've seen this type of page before. We have the whole bond, or the whole facility master plan. The top half was funded by SAVE, the bottom half to be funded by the GO bonds. We were able to summarize all of these into scheduled projects, and Dwayne put that together for us. All these numbers include an inflationary factor, and we came up with a hundred and eighty-eight million, two hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. If you go to the next page, you'll see that instead of five bond sales, we're proposing four bond sales. The reason for that is that we grouped these sales in a little bit more efficient manner. We taught, we discussed our cash flow and how we were going to actually implement these projects, and we felt that it fit better within a, a, a four sale versus a five sale. And what that does for us is it saves issuance costs. costs. Instead of having to get a bond rating five times, you get a bond rating four times, and there's a savings in issuance costs. And I'll tell you how that works in a little bit. You see this number up here, and this is an important concept that I need for you to really internalize, and that is, we talked about stair stepping these as we implemented the tax rate. But in looking at the overall picture, if we were to actually do what we call a pre-levy in this particular bond sale, we would be able to save over the life of the bonds nearly $9 million, which is a pretty significant chunk of change. And I think the fiscal conservative in me says that's a worthwhile thing to really take a look at. But what it does in, over here, in the debt levy, is it makes all of these years very, very consistent, as you can see. And as we bring on new debt, the debt levy is very consistent. And so we bring our tax rate up rather quickly at the very first, and then it just kind of stays at that levy throughout the course of the bond. Now, I'll show you in a minute that this really isn't gonna work this way, because this is calculated on using an assessed valuation without any growth in it after year one. They have to do that, because that's the legally mandated way to compute it, right? So we're using a very conservative, again, 2.25% growth for next year. We've been running at 4.5% average for 20 years. So this is a conservative growth estimate for our assessed valuation, and then we calculate that through. I've taken the liberty to put some examples in your packet tonight, what this looks like if we were to actually put growth on these other years, and we'll get to that in a second. But I wanted just to make sure that you are aware of what this was telling you. This particular page, all this does is it makes sure that when we sell these bonds, that we stay under the $2.70 maximum limit, and we do in all cases. And so that's a bond test that needs to, we have to pass in order for us to have this debt in place. And then we also have this bond test, where our legal limit is 5% of our total assessed valuation. And over here is the column where it tells you that. And nowhere do we even remotely approach this 5%. We get to about $2.30-something, or 2.3% of this 5%. But we have a lot of excess capacity, so we've met that test as well. So these are all the detailed sheets behind it. You can see, for instance, the interest rate assumptions that are being used in here, and the amount of the par of the bonds, what the construction account amount is going to be, issuance costs, underwriter discounts, all those kinds of wonderful things. And at the bottom here, you can see the TIC, which is the total interest cost, and also the all-in cost. This would include all your fees over here. I keep touching the board, and I should never do that. So this is the total interest to be charged on this $45.7 million, and for the life of the bond. And every page is that way. So if you go through each one of these four, you can see that, we won't spend a lot of time on that, because I've summarized that for you in another document, and it's this document here. And this would be on your sheet, about the middle of the packet, on about page nine, you'll see this come up. And it's right here. So what you have is, this number should look familiar to you. So what's going to be deposited into the construction account is the $188.2 million, the total of your underwriter discount, cost of issuance, other par amount. And these have to be in increments of $5,000. That's why they're rounded off to an increment of $5,000, because that's how you sell bonds. Here's the accrued interest, $75.6 million on this $188 million, for a total cost of the, in the debt service of $267 million. And I give you all the stats down here of what that looks like. Now, how does this compare with what we saw in October? I just wanted to go through this with you, because some of you might like to make that connection as well. And so back in October, we were talking about, about $190 million. That was decreased through this last round of revisions. The underwriter discounts are about the same cost of issuance, is a little bit less, as I talked to you about going from five to four. And then the par amount is going to be less, of course, because we're borrowing less. But look at the interest costs. We went from $60 million estimate in October to $75 million estimate now. Why? Because since the election, bond interest has gone up 75 basis points. We've almost gotten a whole percent more in borrowing costs than we did back in October. And so this really has a very, very strong impact on the whole, the whole financing piece because of these interest rate assumptions.
Hey, Greg, the 275 million.
The what?
275 million.
Yeah, what about it?
I wonder if that's wrong, because the page before it says 267.
It could be. I did this in a hurry.
And so I think you just need to note that that's a 267, because if you add up your 15, yeah, that's 2.5, yeah, it's too high.
Yeah, that's a...
The other lines are right.
Yeah.
It's just on some line.
Yeah, that should be less than...
Because principal's 2 million less, the interest is 15 million more, the deficit should be like 13 million, right?
You're right. I'll need to fix that.
Thanks for throwing me a bone.
Now I don't feel like the long range.
It wouldn't be my night if there wasn't something wrong here, right? So we, but I just wanted to give you a general idea of how the interest rate is impacting our interest rate, is impacting our assumptions.
It looks like it went up. I just looked, it was 0.5 or half a point, or I haven't looked at it yet. Yeah. I just saw some twos and threes, and I see threes and fours over here, so.
So what does this look like? Okay. First of all, these are all the assumptions down here that we're using, and all the disclaimers that everything has changed, right? So this is the required method of computation from PFM. And you can see that the total overall debt service is $1.96. Our current debt retiring is 53 cents. That leaves us $1.43 after the retired debt. We're going to soften this by giving up about 45 cents of our cash reserve, because we've positioned ourselves to do that. And so the total impact to our stakeholders is about 98 cents on this bond, which is really quite remarkable when you talk about $188 million. That's pretty significant.
So the 216 max went down to 195. Again, we've talked these adjustments, but now you're down to 98 versus the 162.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So worst case scenario is 98.
Worst case scenario is 98. So what happens in the real world when we apply the valuation growth each year? You can see over here that if we were to apply a 2.5% on down, it reduces our tax levy pretty quickly. And I even did one, just because the board president would want me to, at 4.5%.
Attaboy.
Yeah.
Just a 10-year rule, you have it. Hey, can you grab the first 10, can I hold there?
Just a 10-year rule.
Can you grab 10, 10 data points, 93, what?
You want to run the mouse?
No, no, just do it here.
He'll just touch the screen.
Do like 10 data points.
Yeah, like this? Is that what you want?
Yeah, average 48.
That's pretty nice.
10-year average, 48. Side increase. I like it.
I don't know if it's gonna be 4.5% every year, but the last 20 years, we've averaged that, right?
It goes down pretty fast. It's pretty interesting. So it's actually neutral by, what a way to look at it, is it's neutral by...
Year 15.
15 years on.
Yeah, 15 years on. So anyway, I wanted to give you a glimpse of what we were looking at. In my world, we have to go with the required method, of course, and so the worst case scenario would be the 98 cents.
And just reiterating, at 98 cents, worst case scenario with 0% growth in taxable valuation.
Right.
The way we're required to do it. Worst case scenario, 98 cents still positions us among 10 largest districts in the state, still positions us in 10th place.
It does. It doesn't even move us from last, from the least cost.
We go to 9th place.
We don't even go to ninth.
Bam. Thank you.
That's good.
It's remarkable, in my mind, it's really remarkable how our tax base can really be leveraged here in such a great way for our kids. And this is, this is a real good example of that.
But completely unrealistic to say 0% growth in taxable valuation.
It is.
I just want to...
Well, we should have a depression.
This is probably a more realistic version, you know, if you really want to get down to it. But this is what we've been averaging the last 10 years. But this is a very conservative, realistic way to look at it. Anyway, those are preliminary numbers. I just wanted to get that in your hands tonight. Any feedback you want to offer before we kind of, this is the, this is the path, this is the direction that I would suggest we go. Doing that pre-levy, saving on the interest cost, nearly 9 million of interest cost, reducing from five to four, and taking it out.
Can you give us like the executive summary? Not now, but obviously we save money by going from 191 to 188. You save money by going from five to four. You save money by pre-lowering it. Can you just give us like a number?
I can.
Now, again, you know, your interest has gone up like 13 million.
It has.
It may actually, yeah, just give me a summary, reduce.
I will. I just wasn't able to do it from 3 o'clock this afternoon, so.
Hey, so when are we gonna get to, how fast can we approve the language on?
Well, now that we have the size of the bond, if you guys are okay with that, with this method, I can get this to the attorney, and they can work up the language. And according to our, our plan, you'll be working on the bond language at your next meeting.
Yeah, it was like we approved either 11th or 28th of April.
Right. There's a draft copy at the next meeting, and then I think it was the next meeting that you were gonna approve the language.
Okay.
Right.
But I think, my personal point of view, I think we have like, the sooner we improve it, the better. Let's get this thing launched. I mean, I actually want to go around, it might be final, whatever, but...
I'm sure they can get it worked up. We could, you know, we can get it out to you. And if you wanted to consider it and approve it all in one evening, you can do that. You have the ability to do that, but, you know, it's entirely up to you.
And we can prove it later after that, but...
That's all I have for you this evening.
It's a big thing for you.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, any other questions on the bond?
I have one question. It's not related to what Craig had. It's still bond related, if that's all right.
Yeah.
So some of the, you know, we were trying to figure out the do's and don'ts of what we can and can't do, or what some of the employees can or can't do.
Right.
So I think there's some confusion, and maybe someone can clear it up, as to what board members, they can advocate yes or no for the bond, but they can't do it as a board member role, correct? Like, they need to be done as an individual, like stated as, this is my...
Can you use a non-private example?
Yeah, like, this is my citizen, my individual.
So you'd be using district resources?
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that's correct. Let me, let me, I can research it and get an answer back to you, make sure. But I think a board member can advocate for the bond.
You just can't use district resources, or?
You can't use district resources to do that. So you can't, you couldn't use district email to do that, right? Because that would be using public resources for that purpose, and that's a no-no. But...
So it's, it kind of puts us in a hot spot, because, you know, we try and use our district email when we're doing school board stuff. But if we're gonna be responding in some way that indicates a position on the bond, I guess we'd have to do that in private email address.
You'd have to...
Or just not do an email at all, I guess.
If you use district resources, you can only inform. You shouldn't be advocating for, against the bond using district resources. That's, that's pretty clear in, in the legal, what you can do for, for a bond, what you can't.
But it wouldn't be wrong, I mean, I don't think it's wrong anyways, it's just more of best practice. But it wouldn't be wrong to use our private email address than to send somebody an email, say, what do you think about this? Or, you know, not beyond just information. If they do that, they should do it, maybe, not...
Technically, you know, and you guys all know this, but you're not a board unless you're for or more acting on a particular issue. You don't, you don't portray yourself as a board member when you're an individual, okay? And so you would use your private email as a private citizen at that point. But as a board, I believe you can take a position for, for it, you know, that kind of a thing. But I have to check and make sure that that's the case.
If we want to explain to somebody why we go a certain way on this thing, has something to do with a school board email address, or you have to do that on the outside?
You can do that as long as you are informing and not advocating from one point of view or another.
Okay. I'll probably split say that.
And maybe my question was more, not necessarily about email resources, but let's say a PTO invites you to come and talk about it as your Brian Kersling board member.
I'd be very surprised if you were limited in any way, if you could say that situation.
I would agree.
Even though you might be in a school building.
PTO, PTOs can advocate for, you know, they, they're free to do that, and those kind of things.
Well, exhaling and making mouth sounds with the air in one of our buildings, I think, you know, I hate to say it, but I'm not sure if that's qualified for using district resources.
Well, there's lots of groups that can book. Book rooms or rent space. They love to rent.
We allow anyone for or against to rent space in our...
That's why I have the good...
Right.
All right, anything else on GeoBond? All right, entertaining, most of the jerk. Say, if you'd favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.